Hello, good evening.
Thank you. I'll now read our mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community one student at a time. Cheryl, could we have roll call, please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Vice Chair Criswell.
Here.
Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Here.
Chair Isnard.
Here.
Trustee Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs Andreyu.
Here.
Thank you. I'd now call for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next is our audience to patrons and petitioners. At this time, I'd invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addresses must state their name and address for the record before making any comment or question, and there is a three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone in the chat?
There is no one in the chat.
All right. Looks like we have one approaching the podium. Good evening.
Hello. Adam Hadley, 23531 West 74th Street, Shawnee, Kansas. I'm Faculty Senate President, and I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed 2026-2027 academic calendar. It's a calendar that has added five days for faculty work. The Faculty Senate has rejected this proposal, and they've expressed many concerns about the addition of the five workdays, three beginning in August of 2026, and then two in January of 2027. Historically, faculty have had five, what's called floating days, in recognition of the nature of their work, the flexibility of their work. Really, our faculty are 365-day professional employees, but the academic calendar has 177 days scheduled. This new calendar wants to add five days to that, and so I'm here tonight to basically express the faculty concerns about those five added days and to essentially talk a little bit about the nature of that work and the recognition of the flexibility of the faculty here. Faculty are working during summers, they're working during winter break, they're working during spring break as well. And so historically, at least since 1971, the calendars had those five floating days in there. So this would be a marked change in approaching the scheduling of this academic calendar. The five floating days recognize that faculty are called up during all times during summers to work on the hiring committees, even to participate in training. Just this past summer, the college purchased a new online learning management software system. The rollout of that didn't happen. The training happened in late spring, but the rollout of it didn't really happen until June. And so faculty in this past summer were having to work on their classes for the fall 2024 semester. So that's really the importance of those five floating days is to recognize that we're working at all hours at all times in our service to students, recruiting, in our service to the college, working on hiring committees, working on committees, and so forth here.
One minute.
Sure. And so at the last Faculty Senate meeting, the proposal was brought to us, and the Senate rejected that proposal of the five added days. So I'm here just basically to give you the faculty perspective of that and a little bit of the historical perspective of that as well, those five floating days. So do you have any questions for me, or?
So are you saying you prefer to have it as it was, the five floating days?
Correct. Just essentially what we've done for at least the past 50 years is to recognize the flexibility of faculty work and to have those five floating days where faculty perform service to students in the college when it's needed, not just simply to have them scheduled on those calendar days. Any other questions?
So are there being those five days being added, and then you're still expected to have?
Correct.
So there would be like an addition, there would be like 10 days total?
Right. We see that as an addition to our workload here. The Faculty Senate also rejected the proposal in deference to the IBB process. The Administration Negotiation Team did acknowledge that this is something that should be taken to IBB.
Time limit. Excuse me, what is IBB?
Interest-based bargaining. It's the contract negotiations.
Okay. So you had it before you were taking it before them, or are there suggesting that you take it before then?
There was a suggestion that it be taken to the contract negotiation process, and the Administration Negotiating Team and the Faculty Negotiating Team, both of them agreed that it should be taken for contract negotiations, not to Faculty Senate.
Okay. But faculty has rejected this. I guess I've never really seen this happen before where I thought that between Academic Affairs and the President's Office and faculty, that that academic calendar was set and everyone was pleased, but you're saying this time you all are not pleased with it?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for the information, and just to respect our procedures for community comment, I just want to caution us not to make it too interactive. We do want to hear out the views of the public in this portion of the agenda, but if we have other questions, I think it would be best if we get those to Dr. Mosher, and we continue to work through that negotiation process.
Yep. Understood. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we have another speaker. Good evening.
John Haddock, 17213 Jamison Road, Lubbock, Kansas. KNEA Vice President also. I'd just like to reiterate some things that Adam said. Ever since 1971, we always come back the Monday of Welcome Back Week. We've never had three extra days at the beginning, or the two extra in the fall and two extra days in the spring. It's always started on that Monday. As Adam said, we're consistently on hiring committees, negotiations, other committees where summer breaks, fall breaks, breaks, you know, time that we still come and give our time to the college, that faculty have used those five days, those floating days that we're talking about here, as those days. There are deadlines for us that are being put on the weekends, so that means that now we're working weekends. And if this is approved, like Adam said, we will be working more than 182 days. Two years ago, this five floating days was brought up in negotiations by Vice President Pope. At that point, I thought those five days were going to be put into negotiation process with the union and administration to be brought to negotiations, but apparently that's not going to happen. And so tonight, I ask you to do one of two things. Either send this calendar back to Faculty Association, or Faculty Senate and the Calendar Committee to be rehashed out, or to go ahead and vote on and approve it, but leave those five days and kick those five days to the negotiation process. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we've got one more speaker.
Thank you. Good evening. Darren Elliott, 15905 West 153rd Street, Olathe, Kansas. And I'm the KNEA President. During my 23 years as a faculty member here, I've served as KNEA President, Faculty Senate President, College Senate President, and I'm proud of the work we've always been able to do collaboratively with the Administration. Never once in those 23 years have I come before this board publicly to express concern, and so I hope you understand how serious I take that this evening. This calendar was not only rejected unanimously by the Faculty Senate, which represents 160 faculty, it was rejected unanimously by the KNEA Association, which represents 100 union members. We believe this is a direct attack of shared governance. We also know that HLC had dinged the college before for shared governance, and it's ironic that they'll be back in the fall of 2026, which is the days that these calendars add to the calendar for faculty. There are a lot of faculty who aren't happy. Many couldn't be here tonight. There are certainly some who are, some that are watching online. We also believe that this possibly violates the Kansas statute, which requires that hours and amounts of work be mandatorily negotiable, and so we would also request that this go to negotiations. We also committed to the IBB process a number of years ago, which is interest-based bargaining, where both sides sit down with an issue, and we discuss what are the issues and what are the interests, and let's reach some common ground. I think there are issues on both sides of this. There are interests for both the faculty, and there are interests for the Administration, and there are interests for the students. That should happen in that interest-based bargaining. It shouldn't be sent to the board without context and asking you to vote on it and making you the proverbial bad guy in this situation. There's a lot of context behind this that we can't simply address in three minutes. This issue is ripe for interest-based bargaining negotiations, and that's where it should go. Otherwise, I don't know how the faculty can continue to believe that IBB is part of a shared governance model that this college seeks to uphold.
One minute.
We think this process has undermined shared governance. It undercuts the processes this college has long held. It devalues the work that faculty do, and it deteriorates confidence in our relationship between the faculty and the Administration over this issue. I respectfully request that you send this calendar either in whole or in part back to Faculty Senate or to the negotiations process, where we can deal with these five days and figure out what are the best interests for the students, the faculty, and the staff, the Administration, and resolve it in that form as opposed to here. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is recognitions and presentations, for which there are none scheduled this evening. Next would be communications, also none scheduled this evening. So we'll begin with the Board Committee reports. At this time, I'd invite Vice Chair Criswell to present for the Board Finance Committee.
All righty. Thank you, Chair Isnard, and happy holidays to everyone. Excuse me. The Board, KCKCC Board Finance Committee met on Tuesday, December 10. It was a relatively short meeting, and I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights, because I know that a little bit later on, Dr. Schulte is going to be taking us through some of the particulars related to the finances. But as usual, the college continues to manage the finances and resources quite well. One thing that I, that we actually had some discussion on during the meeting was just making sure that we are consistently providing our citizens, you know, if they should ask, or if any are in viewership today or otherwise, just providing them with clarification regarding the burn rate. Because, you know, it's important for folks to really, really understand that our burn rate right now is trending at 6.6 mil- million, and, excuse me, yes, excuse me, the average, let me back up real quick. The average burn rate is trending at about 7.6 million, and in November, our burn rate, the college's burn rate, was 6.6 million. And it's important to understand that because, you know, we want to make sure folks understand what we're doing with the money that they have entrusted us with. So we had a lot of discussion about that, and we'll continue to, you know, educate folks on what is the burn rate, number one, and then number two, that we are correctly and appropriately and effectively managing the way that we spend the resources, you know, in such that we do have, and that we're so blessed to have. So that was the first thing. Next thing, I won't want to take up too much of your time, but just wanted to make sure that we also had just some correction, not correction, but just some clarification regarding what goes into the downtown campus as far as it being classified as a quote-unquote expense, excuse me, as a quote-unquote revenue. Now, when I say revenue, doesn't mean that we took in additional funding. The funding for the downtown campus is kind of, part of it is coming out of the reserves, and we just wanted to make sure that folks were clear about that, because it's like you're taking in revenue, but it hasn't been built yet, and that is clearly not the case. You know, I live eight blocks from there, and I'm pretty sure I can tell you that that is not the case. So just wanted to make that point of clarification. We also had just, you know, some summary information and some reports that were given by Dr. Schulte, of course, on the specifics of our finances. And I won't steal any of his thunder, but just wanted to, you know, let you know that we did meet. As we normally do, we are consistently managing, and we are consistently aligning ourselves to be able to educate the public or anyone who should ask about how we're managing, how well we're managing, you know, and any other questions that they may have. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Criswell. If there are no questions, I call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Board Policy Committee with Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Chair, we did meet, we reviewed three policies, and that was our first read, and so when we meet in January, depending on whether or not the Senate have seen it, will depend on, will determine whether or not we will be able to bring it back to you, otherwise they may not be on the agenda for approval until Janu, I mean until February, but we did meet. And thank you to the committee for your timeliness. We have, it seems like the policies are simple, but I love the robust conversations we have because that's how we get to the meat of what we really want to do, and thank you too, Lorraine.
Thank you. Are you able to share what the policies are that you're considering now, just so we know what's coming?
I, I can't, I don't remember them off the top of my head, but they were, two of them were already, policies that were already in, that they're just being updated, so we don't usually diverge anything about them until we're bringing them forward, but if you want that information the next time, I'll bring it. Does anybody off the top of their head remember what they were? See, I don't want to start saying stuff and say the wrong thing.
One of them I know was regarding time off for voting, and the other one I know was regarding break times.
Break times, I, yeah.
Our break times.
But I can say exactly what they were, so I didn't want to, yes.
That's general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if no other questions, I call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, the Board Community Engagement Committee with Trustee Riggins.
Absolutely, big shout out to our community engagement team. Everyone was in attendance, we met last Thursday, I believe that was the 12th. I believe that was the 12th. Couple of updates that we have, we will be putting together a small pilot team of five community members, and these individuals will be helping us test engagement strategies and processes before we scale out and make a larger community engagement team. We were able to finalize what documents we, and these are already public documents that we want to be able to share with the community members. That has already been reviewed and confirmed, and these will actually be the same ones that we will share during our upcoming Board Retreat with everyone. The first set of emails will be going out this Friday to potential community members as part of our engagement process. We have our launch meeting scheduled for January, that will be a virtual one, and then we will have our first in-person with our community members engaged as well, scheduled for February. Ongoing, our engagement plan for the committee will be quarterly with the pilot team of community members, and then monthly continuing with our internal board team to review progress and address any challenges and ensure that our alignment, that our goals are aligned, and we will continue just to monitor and evaluate that pilot group and gather further feedback after our February meeting to share with the team. That is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Riggins? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
She has a question.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, the, the documentation that you'd mentioned is already public information, just wanted to make sure it was clear. So are you going to be redistributing, redistributing the information, or are you going to be just like taking excerpts, or what is the plan?
No, for instance, like one of them that we'll share with them is, let's say, is the Centennial 100, so that everyone will have the same information, the annual report, there was another one, Don, I can't remember what the other one was. But we had three documents and brochures that we already have put together, so we're not looking to, what was it?
Fast fact sheet.
The fast fact sheets.
Okay, so it's a body of information, okay, I understand.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, I believe we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, the ACCT and KACC delegate report, Trustee Ash.
Yes, thank you. ACCT, we're preparing for legislative summit in early February in Washington DC. So I, I talked to Cheryl the other day, and we have appointments set with our two senators, and, and we're working on appointment for newly-elected Congressman Derek Schmidt, so whenever he gets, you know, a transition plan together or an office setup, we can make contact with him, we'll see about setting that appointment, maybe some other appointments there. So, and then of course, Trustee Hoskin Sutton and I will have to go in a day earlier to do our committee meetings, and so all of those, I think, arrangements are made for those of us that are going in February, and so right now, it's just, it's a little crazy in Washington. Who's in charge, I, you know? So anyway, there's not a whole lot, you know, being done with, as it, as it relates to affecting us at this point, but it'll start to happen pretty quick, I think, in January. As far as KACC goes, I forwarded you all just today a recap that Heather Morgan put together of the meeting from Parsons a couple of weeks ago, and that includes a recap, it also includes the finalized legislative agenda for KACC for when the State House convenes in January. And then there's also on their calendar, if you will, of meetings that are scheduled for 2025, if you want to see about getting any of that on your personal schedule or anything. So you can read that for all of the details, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, you know, that you might have, but other than that, I don't have anything to report. It's downtime right now.
And according, you know, to the minutes, you know, I was talking a lot about our trip to the Congress in October last year, and was talking about DEI because that's the community that I serve on, and I had mentioned that there was an article that I read, the cost of not being inclusive, and in the minutes, it says that I'm going to report on that today. So I wrote some things down, I'm going to try to make this real quick and not lengthen our meeting, but it, the website is diversity resources, and the title of this is the, the cost of not being inclusive, and it's by Shamaya El Ghazali. I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, but Cheryl, if you need me to send it to you. But it talks about in 2018, the CEO of Papa John made the company take a hard hit because of a racial slur that he made, and the consequences of that was they lost millions of dollars, stores had to close. Then it gave another example of an article was with the company CrossFit, where the CEO, who in 2020 made insensitive remarks about Black Lives Matter, they lost tons of partnerships in the United States, including Reebok and just many, many other, but then it affected them worldwide just by saying that. And then, as the article said, the companies that prioritize inclusive see direct financial benefit according to a research by McKinney, with diverse teams, more creativity, better problem-solving, and, and understanding of customer needs. And they gave example of Ben and Jerry's, how they have a loyal following and how they still do so well because they do pay attention to inclusion. And then it said the takeaway is clear, inclusive isn't optional. The cost of not being inclusive can be measured in dollars, lost trust, and damaged reputation. It's about building a substantial business that can thrive in today's world. So I'm going to, it's a longer article, but I just gave those excerpts, but trustees, if you are interested in this article, let me know, and I can forward it to you, and you can read the, the, the full article, and I thought it doesn't matter if, whether it's a, a business in the business world or an educational institution, you have to be inclusive, so I gave that report on it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from trustees? Hearing none, I call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. If there are no questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, at this time I call for a motion to approve, please.
There, there, I do have something on the, the first one, item A, approval of the minutes, and it's for your, it's on page 14 of 118, if you're looking at the overall, but if you're looking specifically at the minutes, it's page 11 of 26, and it's two things I want to address. In here, the way it's written about Dr. Tammy Bartunik, I just want to give a clarification on that. I know her really well, she does fabulous things in the community, and when we see each other, we talk. So we have talked recently, and she understands, and she knows that I was not saying that she had done anything wrong. So I think it's clear, it's imperative that, because of the way this is written, that I make this statement, that, and she knows, she and I have talked, and she knows that I was not saying that she had done anything wrong. And then just below that, a statement that I made was not included, so I did not complete the conversation. It's right above where it says additional conversation ensued, and it says Chair Isna thought it was important to remember that things do not have to be something intentional, that some things are oversights and can happen. So the statement that I made after that was not included, and I, the correction is I want that to be included in the minutes. And it, the statement that should be included should say that Trustee Hoskin Sutton said that a single oversight is very different from a pattern of oversight over a, over several years. And so with that, I, I move that the approval of the minutes with that correction added to it. Trustee Hoskin Sutton stated that simple oversight is very different from a pattern of oversight over several years.
We have a motion on the floor, however, I'm wondering if you might be willing to amend your motion that Cheryl would review again the video and just make sure that we get the wording correct before, and we approve the minutes with that edit? Would that be okay, just so we get the wording correct?
Sure, it may not, I may not have stated it exactly, but I did, I know I said that because I remember addressing you. So my main concern is that it didn't, with my statement being left out, the conversation was not completed. And so as long as there's an understanding that my statement that was said immediately after your statement is going to be added, then I'm okay. But my statement should not be left out because it was part of the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Baylog, did you have something?
We'll review the archive to ensure that the minutes accurately reflect the comments made by Trustee Hoskin Sutton.
Okay, so if I understand the motion now, you are, your motion is to approve the consent agenda with a review of that portion of those minutes to correct the statements?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next we have the Student Senate Report with Mr. Joseph Sanchez, Student Senate President.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Me and the rest of the Student Senate, we are working on a safety walk around campus, see what maybe needs to be fixed, like sidewalks, water fountains. We had our finals breakfast on last Tuesday on 12/9/24, we served over 250 students and staff. This Thursday, we will be doing Winter Wonderland from nine to one, we have 59 families signed up, and that is all I have to report for right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanchez? Hearing none, call for a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now for the President's Report, tonight, subbing in for Dr. Mosher and Dr. Baylog.
Thank you Chair Isnard. President Mosher sends his regrets for being unable to attend today's meeting. He shared his report with me for presentation, which I now present on his behalf. This has been a full and productive year with many projects in the works, such as the Downtown Project, new assessment processes being implemented, advanced emphasis on high school partnerships and international development, preliminary work on the Lansing site, implementing 4DX as our new operational model, and much, much more. It takes countless people to make all this happen, so my sincere thanks and gratitude to everyone. This last week, we celebrated the 100th candlelighting ceremony for KCKCC. This was a great event, and the talent demonstrated by our students and faculty and staff was amazing. We also had a wonderful holiday party, and it was terrific to see so many people attend, including members of the Board of Trustees and retirees. As this is the last meeting of the 2024 calendar year, I will keep it brief, but I do want to really emphasize the terrific work everyone at KCKCC is doing to continue our level of excellence in multiple areas and even enhance what we do and how we do it with 4DX. Wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season. I hope people have the opportunity to spend time with friends and family, and I look forward to seeing everyone again in 2025. This concludes the report.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
I, I had just had a, a comment, I just want to give kudos, and I'm giving it in, under his report because the Foundation Office reports to the President's Office, and I noticed in the separation that Catherine Katie Lindgren is resigning, and I just want to say, I, we're going to miss you, and the work that you've done with the scholarship within the Foundation has just been amazing. I, I, just back up a little bit here, as a trustee, my, one of my committee assignments is the Foundation, and that's why I attend their meetings, and then within that, I serve on the Scholarship Committee, and then within that, I review so many applications, just like other members who are on that committee, and Katie has streamlined it so, it goes so smooth, it is just amazing what she has done with that. So Katie, I'm sorry that you're leaving us, but I just want to say thank you for all that you, you've done, you've just brought this scholarship process just seamless and smooth, so thank you. To Katie Lindgren.
I second that.
Yes.
She leaves a big hole.
Yes.
Oh, I could tell stories.
Tough act to follow.
The Foundation has, has just come along so beautifully and so smoothly, and that was one of our biggest challenges for the years that I served on the Foundation, where it's like, how do we streamline that so that we can maybe extend the scholarship, you know, timeframe a little bit longer, so that, they have worked hard, they have worked hard.
I really hate to see you.
Yes, someone has some big shoes to fill.
Move, approve, log, report. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now with Dr. Baylog again, the Executive Vice President's Report.
Thank you. The Executive Vice President's Office presents its monthly update to the Board of Trustees centered on institution strategy, partnerships, and operations. This past month, we continued our work with the EV Hub Consortium and the American Association of Community Colleges. The college hosted a representative from the American Association of Community Colleges who visited to learn more about our work to develop, sustain, and grow our Automation Engineer Technology Apprenticeship in support of Panasonic Energy Corporation of North America. Our program will be used as a model for colleges across the country in electric vehicle and component manufacturing. Ashley Urban and I also traveled.
Ashley Urban and I also traveled to Austin, Texas with our consortium partners to visit Austin Community College and their Tesla Training Center. We also toured Tesla's Gigafactory to learn more about their operation. Tesla manufactures the Cybertruck and Model Y. At their Austin Gigafactory, they produce a Model Y in just sixteen minutes.
Wow.
Based largely on robots. That's why the training that we do within Automation Engineer Technology is so important. Prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, Cabinet hosted a quarterly retreat focusing on our four disciplines of execution implementation, prioritization of facilities, projects contained in the college's master facilities plan, and the roadmap for our upcoming technology modernization. We're also laser focused on enrollment ahead of the spring semester across all college programs in the Pioneer Career Center in Leavenworth. Our satellite locations require distributed approach with instruction and student support services. And as a team, we're exploring ways to expand course and service delivery across all sites. As relates to partnerships, tis the season for annual meetings and dinners, galas, and other celebrations. Thanks to all of you for taking time to attend and participate in numerous events this past month hosted by our partners and friends across the metro. We appreciate you representing KC KCC. A highlight for me, though, was attending the unveiling of a traveling history exhibit sharing the rich history of Sumner High School. Produced by four Sumner Academy students with support from KC KCC team members Shai Perry and Aaron Margolis, the college was proud to sponsor the exhibit. We look forward to hosting it on campus in the spring semester. Vice President Pope and I were in attendance for the school assembly where the project was unveiled. It's incredible. It's incredible work by those students. Special thanks again to Shai Perry and Aaron Margolis for their support of that project. Finally, as it relates to operations and execution, thank you to my colleagues across the college for their engagement and support of our implementation of forty-X this semester. Late last month, we hosted an abbreviated forty-X overview and implementation session for our academic program coordinators. Earlier this month, we hosted a team lead launch review for our non-academic areas. We are working with those areas now to finalize their teams' wildly important goals and lead measures ahead of our go-live in early January. The opportunities and the ideas that their work has yielded is extraordinary. It, it really impressed us, was quite inspiring, and so we're just so proud of the work that, that they have done to date. Now we execute. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Baylog? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President Academic Affairs Report with Mr. Pope. Good evening.
Good evening. You know, things happen fast, so the first bullet point in my highlight is no longer accurate. So Dr. Moser had reviewed the HLC report, and I actually submitted it this morning, so.
Yeah.
I got my confirmation, so it's all submitted, and we'll wait to hear their response sometime in January, so.
Awesome.
I'll be reporting, hopefully it's a positive response, but I'll be reporting on that response at that time. Also, the Kbor Performance Report, we typically report on that in January because we never know exactly when they're going to vote on it, but they actually voted on it in November, November twentieth. So it went to Kbor, and we were approved for a hundred percent of new funding. So just to give that report, that happened. There's some really interesting things and good things. So the Interdisciplinary Undergraduate Research Symposium, this year, there were ninety-seven participants in that. And so that has grown over the years. And it's an opportunity, and there's some pictures, but it's an opportunity for students to report and to share some research projects that they're doing. So kudos to everyone that was involved in that. The honors music appreciation, I always like hearing this, being a, you know, musician by profession. They went to the Kaufman Center and heard a rehearsal, so they didn't go to a performance, but they heard a rehearsal. But one of the things that they were able to do is to participate in a question and answer session. So I've already heard from some of the, through the instructor, but from some of the students, it was just an interesting thing for them to be able to get that question and answer from, from the symphony. Lansing Correctional Facility, we are gearing up for the Certificate B in spring twenty-five, so we've offered a Certificate A through requests from the Department of Corrections, as well as individuals at Lansing Correctional Facility. We've added a Cert B, so we got some grants to get some more equipment. Our faculty there, Chris Nicole especially, was working with students who completed the program a couple of years ago so that they could remind themselves of the skills, so they would be ready to start that cohort in spring. So thanks to him. The Culinary Arts Program had their culinary capstones. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go, but I know the food was really good. Exciting about the Commission on Accreditation and Physical Therapy Education, so CAPTIA. So our PTA program was approved to be hybrid. And what's interesting is I reported that it was one of the first programs in another venue, but it's actually the first program in the country that's been approved to be hybrid. So that group is on the cutting edge, and we expect a full class to start in the spring. So congratulations to the faculty and the dean who were working on that. And then just a couple of other items that I thought were really interesting. High School Portfolio Day, so we had seventy-three local high school, USD five hundred high school students here bringing their art, and that art was adjudicated. So I got to welcome the students, and it was a really fantastic event with a local artist to share some of his work process, as well as to review some of their art. So that was really an interesting event. Freedom's Frontier National Heritage Area, so I went to Sumner High School, Dr. Baylog and I, and a couple of others. And we saw a wonderful, the fruition, if you will, of a wonderful project that Aaron Margolis had headed up with a grant that he received, talking about the history of Sumner High School. It's a traveling, it's on banners, it's a traveling program. I know they're going to the USD five hundred board meeting, and they're going to come to our board meeting too, to kind of show that. So it was just, it was a really interesting, interesting event for that, and thanks to everybody that participated. And the one student who spoke, she should be a speech student because I, she was really so good. I thought, I wish I'd been able to speak like that when I was seventeen years old, and I don't think I could. Although I did have a big accent, being from Texas. And then we have a couple of pinnings. The PTA pinning is tonight, so we can't go to that, but the nursing pinning is tomorrow night at seven PM in the Performing Arts Center. So we often have that in the fieldhouse, and we can't have it in the fieldhouse this year, but if you're interested in attending, it is tomorrow, tomorrow night. And with that, I'll conclude my report and take any questions.
Yes, I saw Tiffany, Dr. Bohm, over there earlier, and I know she probably had to leave because of the pinning. But that was my one question. I'm limiting myself tonight. That was my one question was about the PTA. Now that is going to be hybrid. How is that going to affect the clinicals? Will that, will they still do that on ground in person, or will they be?
I will ask to make sure.
Okay.
But yes, there is, there's definitely an on-ground component to that. So it's not a completely online program. But as I understand it, the didactic portion is online. And so it'll limit the amount of time that students have to come to class physically.
And probably over the long time, will increase enrollment.
That's the whole.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome. I was glad to see that. Thank you.
Hearing no other questions for Mr. Pope. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Report with Dr. Cordy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few highlights I wanted to, to share with the board. Our enrollment for spring is good. It's looking very robust. We're, we're encouraged by our numbers. We've had some, a few glitches, but, you know, I think we're going to do real well for, for spring semester compared to last spring semester. With athletics, we talked about the fieldhouse. The athletic director informed me that the completion date now is sometime in May, so it's, it's been delayed. And unfortunately, you know, it's, it's part of the construction process, and so we'll have to live with that. But as I mentioned at the last board meeting, you know, if you could go to any of the games this spring semester that the teams have, we have it in different locations all around the area, but it'd be nice if you could go to their games because really, they don't have a home court this, this semester, as they didn't have one in the fall semester. But we also have our women's volleyball. They placed fourth in the nation, and our women's soccer was seventh nationally. And so I want to congratulate our athletic director, Greg McVeigh, that had such a great record this year. It's, I think, as, I think you've shared with me, that's the best the program's ever done here at the, at the school. Thank you. That's been great. Other things of note, some of you might have been aware, we've had some problems in financial aid with the FAFSA rollout. On December eleventh, President Biden has signed into the law a hard deadline for the Department of Education to release the FAFSA by October first. And the reason that's so important is because students have to submit that in order to get their financial aid pack, uh, package estimated. And this past year, it wasn't until January that it came out. It was way too late, and it really affected a number of our, our students. Other things of note, our Student Success Center, we have almost forty percent increase in traffic this semester compared to last semester, which is good to hear. And also, we have rolled out our post-admission engagement module. We're working with a company called Archer, and they are assisting us in working on a, a process for students that have been admitted here but have yet to enroll. And so that's, we've rolled this out this past week, and hopefully it will yield some really good results in the spring semester and upcoming semesters. So those are just some of the highlights. Now, we've only got five minutes, but those are the highs I wanted to share with you, other than ones that are in my report.
Could you give just a little bit more information on Archer? Just a little bit more on the concept? What are they? What's the program?
Well, well, here was our challenge. We had a forty percent increase in applications, but we didn't have a forty percent increase in students registering for class. And it's understandable, you're going to have some melt, you know, not going to have forty percent. But what, what we, what we did is we discussed with Archer, who, who really was the company we've used to drive increased applications, to see what they could do to help us with the next stage, so that we can engage students in a very proactive way so that they would move from just being accepted here to enrolling in classes. And so, you know, what I can do is, is I can, I can share with you what steps Archer has developed for us so that you would be like a mock student, you could see what, what it has. Because sometimes it would be overwhelming for students. They, they would have, you know, this whole list of things to do, and they really wouldn't know where to start, how to start in that process. And so really, that's what we're trying to do with the, the next stage, so we can capture those students so that they're not as bewildered, you know, after they've been accepted here, so we can get them to enroll in classes. And so, so I can, I can share that with the board.
I, I think that would be great. I think, unless I'm the only board member that would love, I would love to even see a little bit on the demographics of that. Are we thinking, are these like the fresh out of high school students? Are they the, the more seasoned students? Where we see the, that gap in enrollment or applying and being accepted and actually enrolling?
I can, I can share that with you.
Beautiful. Thank you.
I agree. I'd like to see it as well. So, thank you. And.
That's my nerdy side coming out.
I would be remiss, I, there's another resignation on here that just hurts my heart. I see Ruben, and I mentioned it to you because, I'm saying it now because it's under your report.
Yeah.
It's, I know it's on the consent agenda, but Ruben Rodriguez is no, resigned as the head coach for the men's soccer. And I want to say thank you to all that he did for this college. I remember when we were just getting soccer off the ground, and he came here. I think you know him, don't you? He's well-known in the community, has done a lot of great things. And so I just want to say thank you, Ruben Rodriguez, for coming to Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and getting our men's soccer program started and off the ground, so.
Yeah. I know he'll be a loss, and I think my athletic director mentioned that, you know, Ruben decided to move into another career. And so, you know, he's leaving coaching, but, you know, he will be a loss for the college.
Yes.
Yeah, he got things going here and rolling and built up. For one or two years, he coached the men's and the women's.
Yes.
And, you know, as a college sorting through finances and things, and he, he was a tremendous asset here.
And we are in the process of, we are in the process of going through the search that, you know, to replace Ruben. I mean, he, he can't be replaced, or we're finding someone that can do the job.
Succeeding.
Yeah, succeeding, that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Move approval of report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Finance and Operations Report with Dr. Schulte. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the time. Just wanted to touch base, as Chair Chriswell noted, a little bit on finance in regards to the meeting that we had, but then also want to make sure I cover the other areas underneath my leadership. The Business Office and Finance, we took a look at the report, and as we look at the end of the second quarter, our revenue position was at about forty-eight percent of our projected budget revenue. So our allocation of revenue taken in was almost fifty percent as we got through the second half, or the first half of this year. And our expense side was at about thirty-two percent, so it gives you an idea where we are. We've collected the revenue we needed, and expense about thirty-two percent. So looking at expense monitoring as we go through the year, there will be ebbs and flows throughout the year as we look at expenses. So we may see things trend up and down. But at the same time, as we turn the corner and look at an allocation from the county property tax in January, we sit in a pretty good financial position as we move forward. A second note in the area of the Business Office and Finance, our, our prayers have been answered. I honestly think tomorrow we may close on the New Market Tax Credit. The work that we've been doing over the last six months in my time here, and it's a lot of players, it's not just me involved, has been a crazy amount of work as we've worked our way through this. I, I would be remiss not to thank Karen Callahan publicly, coming in on my team and really driving this. We will close that tomorrow, and then the next phase of that starts as we go through the allocation process of those funds for that downtown project as well. Inside of our budget area, we noted partner invoice billing, and we continue to work with our partners on the downtown project. Nearly two million dollars in expense for our downtown allocation and working with Swope Health and CACU as we move in that direction as well, and making sure that we're a good partner in the process of transacting those expenses, but then allocating the right expenses to each of the areas as we move forward. In November and December, as noted, we don't expect any significant inflows in revenue as we're almost at that fifty percent mark of our revenue, and we'll just continue to track on our expenses as we move through the, through the month. Purchasing and grants in coordination with IT, we have two RFPs out, one for Colleague Optimization. As we talk about, Colleague is SaaS, software as a service. We continue to look at our optimization and developing a partner to come in and help us with standard operating procedures. We have Colleague now on campus, but we want to maximize how are we using our, are we using it effectively? How can we move towards using it effectively and be effective as we move into the next phase of that as well? The other is the student experience redesign, taking a look at how do we design the process for our students on campus as they walk in the door? And that's comprehensive. It looks at all areas, not just in finance, but how do we treat the student from the day they think about KC KCC to the day they leave us? Inside of Human Resources, we currently have fifty-nine positions that are open and posted, so a lot of work happening inside of Human Resources. One area is actively recruiting. They're recruiting, actively recruiting, and all of them, one highlighted is the Director for the Center of Equity, Inclusion, and Multicultural Engagement, as well as an administrative assistant for that department as well. So they continue to do a lot of work in that department, taking a look at, as positions turnover, as noted, making sure we're posting them, going out and doing what we can to attract and retain the best and brightest candidates for those positions. In training, they had several monthly trainings going on, Military and Veteran Center had a training, as did, they took a look at Feed Your Brain Nutrition and Concentration and Focus, and new supervisor training. So not only is it the opportunity of bringing people on in Human Resources, it's how are we providing them information to continue to be strong employees while here and educating them through that process and being a partner. Inside of Information Services and IT, partnering with Academic Affairs on the Kansas Systemwide General Education Completion Notation, the KC KCC transcript. Really, that's a focus on a system-wide general education framework to facilitate student transfer more efficiently and requires Kansas Public Institutions to participate. So taking a look at how do we maximize transfers between institutions and students coming to us with transfer as well. to us with transfer as well? Institutional Effectiveness worked on the gainful employment through the federal government to set up gainful employment data with the National Student Clearinghouse. Records and Registration and Student Success Center looked at reverse transfer program reporting as well, making sure we're taking into consideration that process in relation to students being able to make a transfer. Inside of the Business Office, working on Nell Net Cashiering, looking at ways, and we talked previously, I think last month, about breaking down those barriers for students financially to make sure they have an opportunity to get on payment plans, be able to enroll and persist while here at KCKCC. And the bookstore, taking a look at our online digital materials as we see paper copies of textbooks kind of going by the wayside. How are we partnering in making sure our students have access to resources on day one while they're in the classroom as well?
One minute.
In Facility Services, we're working on Tech One, a bus stop on Tech One. It's been a project that's been, the, the, the city has stated that it's going to happen in 2026, but we don't want to wait that long. So we're taking a proactive approach to developing that at Tech One and getting a bus stop there as well. Removal of Little Leaders KCK Playground Equipment, they got a grant at the Little Leaders for new playground equipment and we're offering our facility services to remove the previous one there so that they can install a new one for those, those little ones that are there. In College Police, we are focused on our Chief of Police Search. The search committee actually met today. We have eight candidates that we're going to move forward into the first round of interviews. Those will be Zoom interviews as we have a 30-minute interview with each of them. All of those meet minimum qualifications. We're excited about the pool that we have as we look forward to that next phase. Chief Putsky's retirement is just around the corner on January 6th. Finally, the Wellness Center, the Wellness Center's focused on fitness, held a Torch the Turkey Fitness Challenge event in November as they're looking at ways to engage campus community around this time of year where we eat at Thanksgiving and we eat at a Christmas holiday, as well as Merry Fitness Day Celebration, which celebrate the Wellness Center members as well, which was held on December 9th. With that, I'm out of time, so I will open if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Schulte. We have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Educational Innovation and Global Programming Report with Dr. Iobe. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How are we today?
Hello.
Great. As you know, the Division of Educational Innovation and Global Programming includes high school partnerships, adult and continuing education, online education services, global programming and workforce development. We decided to go a different way in our reporting this month, focusing on our strategic priorities as outlined in our strategic plan. With that, looking at student success, we're happy to notice that our high school enrollment for the spring is about 19% of our enrollment and it looks like our numbers are stabilizing to post, post pandemic, to pre-pandemic numbers. So we're excited about that. We have seen a great, record growth in adult and continuing education enrollment. We already have 120 students enrolled in both our GED and ELA programs with some very strong waiting lists as we're looking to add more teaching staff, particularly in our ELA program. So that is up there. We're also happy to report that we had a citizenship milestone. One of our students got their citizenship while in the program, so we want to say congratulations to them for that. Looking at global programming, our international student numbers have grown 44% from last fall. Currently, we already have a 22-student waiting list of transfers that are going to be coming into the college next spring. And so we are really excited about what, the work that we're doing with global engagement. Thank you to everyone who helped with International Education Week from the weeks, from the week of November 18th to the 22nd. We saw over 265 people engage with us across activities and initiatives on campus. So kudos for that. Looking at quality programs and services, the online education team is really taking it by storm when we're looking at AI integration, not only leveraging Panopto, the video recording tool for our learning management system and Blackboard Ultra, but also leveraging how Blackboard has integrated AI into the system and how it could support us with different features, particularly around our chat box. Not to mention, we are adopting a new data analysis software called Illuminate that is around learning analytical systems. And our Genius Portal, you heard it mentioned, we're excited about our Genius Portal because it's going to help us create a streamlined pathway for our students coming in from non-credit to credit so that our students have a one KCKCC experience. So we're really excited about that. We are also exploring global partnerships with the Hilltop Global Group. We said that our international numbers have grown 44%. 36% of that are coming from the African continent. So we reached out to Hilltop Global to help us create some strategic intent around our student recruitment, around getting more students from Africa here since they're coming already, right? So around that work, so we're really excited about that. We had a great meeting with some diverse stakeholders around campus, including a faculty and staff, to really give their voices into the conversation, see what they're seeing in their classrooms, see what they're seeing around campus to help inform that work. So we're really excited. Looking at employee engagement, as we mentioned, we have a lot of new technology getting onboarded on college campus and our faculty have been great with giving their time and their expertise in learning it, integrating it into their classroom. So we're excited about how actively engaged they have been in all the technology training around campus. And we're also excited about everyone who is just committed to innovation, right? Whether it's looking at how we could enhance our programs with experiential learning, looking at building out entrepreneurship ecosystems, or just different ways as far as flexible scheduling and cost offerings for our high school partnership. There is a real good stakeholder committee coming around this work and people just putting their hands in to make sure that we're doing it and we're doing it right to meet the different needs of our stakeholders. So we're excited about that. Looking at
One minute.
Engagement. Our workforce program, I mean, our student tours are increasing in numbers. Most recently, we had about 27 students from Sumner High School spend the day with us looking at our AET lab. We have a youth ambassador program through Adult and Continuing Education that hosts a Saturday Academy here. And we're seeing a lot of those students are coming to our KCKCC regular scheduled programming to get information. So there is a lot happening when it comes to community engagement and leveraging spaces that we're traditionally not in. We're working with our International Education Committee to focus on collaborative online international learning. We have partnered with different institutions, particularly in K-State, to figure out how we could have stronger pathways when it comes to shared teaching and opportunities around virtual exchange and also working with the State University of New York System, SUNY System in that space as we have two, two instructors right now and two administrators going through training on, on coil. And my final comment would be congratulations to our IMT graduates that's taking place right now. We have seven students graduating from, from our IMT program this evening. Three of them have already secured a $3 increase in raise and one of them got a $10 increase. So kudos to them and congratulations.
And one of them is my youngest son.
I'll let you say that.
Awesome.
Congratulations to those graduates. Do we have any questions for Dr. Iobe?
We have a prologue report.
Yeah. Congratulations. I'm just, I think I'm just all grins over here, congratulations.
I'm just the person, I guess, to talk about it. There are a lot of hands that are in this work making it happen, particularly our students. They're committed to it. Like you said, those IMT graduates, those evening classes, that commitment, same with our international student population. So people are hard at work and we're excited.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We next have the Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image Report with Ms. Green. Oh, actually, I apologize. We'll have Mr. Royer subbing in tonight, Director of Media Services.
Good evening.
Wow.
You sure have changed.
What big eyes you have.
This month, the Marketing and Institutional Image Division work aligned with the student success, employee engagement and community engagement priorities in the strategic plan. The Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image has worked with the Enrollment Management and Student Affairs Division to complete the new comment portal experience with Archer Education. This experience went live this month and provides students with an enhanced experience to help them move through the college's enrollment process. The VP MII continues to support the enrollment process by providing leads to admissions through the Marketing and Institutional Image Digital and Local Media Strategies. In consolation with Employee Task Force and based on recent satisfaction studies, the VP of Marketing and Institutional Image has drafted an Employee Communication Plan. This plan will be shared with administration and others before being implemented. The Marketing and Institutional Image Division has sent out the annual community engagement survey to employees. The president's office has also sent a reminder. The survey will be completed and the results compiled by the end of January 2025. A new four-page booklet showcasing the Kansas City, Kansas Community Education, Health and Wellness Center is complete and available for board members, partners and KCKCC staff to share with the community. Marketing and Institutional Image has completed the research and planning phase of the new website redesign. A significant component of the website redesign is creating an academic program page with the same base information for each page, program, sorry. The content for the pages has been driven by information students requested during the research phase. In December, the concepts were presented to the president's cabinet and student senate. Additional presentations will occur in January. The Marketing and Institutional Division has been very busy this month with services from enrollment marketing, graphic design, digital design and photography, web services, social media and support services from the events and scheduling, the media services and the print shop departments. Chris asked me to show a video to you guys that she's been working on, so I will switch over and ask Chad to punch that up for me.
I've always been interested in working on cars. I thought the collision repair program would be a good fit for me.
This program takes your students from beginning stages of maybe not even knowing what a tool is, all the way to where they can take a car, disassemble it inside and out, fix minor repairs, small dents, they know frame damage, and then they can go all the way to refinishing where they can paint full vehicles, mix paint, match and detail.
My favorite part so far has been when we got to paint. I know how to change brake oil, some brakes.
And then whenever they leave here, they'll have all the soft skills that they need in order to be an entry-level tech inside the shops in any area around the nation.
I would tell someone to come here because, well, I haven't found any better program. I, I've searched three other colleges before I came here and this was the better one. If you want friendly teachers, good advice, decent people to work with, this is where you want to be.
And I'll answer any questions that I can try to answer.
Can the public bring their cars here for repair?
That I'm not sure of.
Well, we'll have to look into that one for you, Brenda. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Royer?
Do we happen to have copies of the new booklet with us tonight?
I do not have them with me, but we can get them to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Hearing no other questions. We have a motion to accept the report, please.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Randy. Next on our agenda is unfinished business, which there is none scheduled for this evening. So we will move to new business. This time, I'd invite the presentation of the academic calendar for 2026, '27 presented by Mr. Pope.
So you have the academic calendar in your board packet. We tried a little different format this time, so it's been just graph, uh, text. And so we tried to clearly identify what the 182 days are on the calendar and as well as identifying the days that the college are closed. And then on the right-hand side are relevant dates in each month. So we bring this, we bring this forward for your consideration.
So I think this would be the appropriate time for us to have some discussion concerning the presentations we heard earlier.
Right. This would be a good time for questions for Mr. Pope and I'll start, if you don't mind, Trusty Ash with mine and just if you can give us from the administration perspective some context around, we heard the term used floating days and what that, that means and in contract negotiations, including NEA contracts that I've been involved in before. I, I'm not really familiar with those. Usually the 182 or 186 depends on the organization or the actual reporting dates. So
Right.
Is that
And so
history for us that we have the floating days?
So we have had this discussion about this calendar before. Dr. Mosher has asked me for this format and as we were looking at days, we did realize that there are 177 days typically. And so it was part of his direction to come up with the 182 days identified. As a KNEA person, as a former faculty member, I will admit that I've never heard the words floating holiday, but that just is my experience. And so I'm not, I'm not saying that someone else didn't. I'm just saying that in my experience, I'd never heard those, that term floating days. And so it was an effort to kind of conform to, I would say, most calendars that we've seen as we've been looking at calendars and just to clearly identify what the 182 days are, also so that 212-day faculty can use those first 182 days to, if they're teaching, those 182 days to identify their 212.
Questions or comments from the board?
Earlier in the discussion, and we appreciate everyone coming forth with, with their information and opinions, I understood that there had traditionally been five floating days and my interpretation of, of what I heard was there would be, was it 10 or less than? I, I want to make sure I'm clear on what the, what the concerns were. Were you adding five floating days to the, to the academic calendar for '26, '27?
So the '26, '27 calendar identifies 182 working days for 182, 182 faculty. There are three days starting on August 5th, which is three days before the Welcome Week that the calendar indicates that faculty would be available. So available to answer enrollment questions, available to, to answer any student-related questions. And then they would come to campus on the 10th, so report to campus on the 10th for the Welcome Week activities. And I'm just referring to the days in this calendar. And then in January, there would be two days prior to the Welcome Week where they would be available for those same kind of questions.
Okay. So just mathematically speaking, I just want to make sure the, first of all, the, if we just look at, see the, the faculty available days, those are actual working days
Yes.
as, as written on the calendar, based on the green.
Correct.
Okay. So I want to return real quick if I could. I don't want to suck up a bunch of time in this meeting, but I just want to make sure I'm super clear. So the floating days, you don't use that term, Mr. Pope? Is that correct?
The first time I recall hearing that term was when we were discussing this, discussing the language that we added for 212-day teaching faculty in negotiations.
Okay.
So
So floating days could be translated to faculty available days? Is that, I'm trying to understand what, what that is.
I, I mean, I can only give what my understanding, although I don't know if it's correct because I didn't come up with that term. But, I mean, I don't know if I want to, I mean, I assume it's just in that, well, I don't know. I mean, do they identify five extra days? Does each faculty member identify those days? I mean, this was just an attempt to clearly identify on the calendar, using the definition of working days, what those 182 days are.
Which they're being paid for.
Yes. They're 182-day faculty and they're being paid for 182 days and 212 faculty are paid for 212. Yes. So it was an attempt to identify clearly what those 182 days are.
Okay. They're available They're available, they may and may not work depending on the activity, but they get paid for that day. Speaking of the 182, I mean, the 212 get 212, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pope. Okay.
Trusty, after you, did you have a question?
No, I was just saying that I understood it, that they, before they had five days, that they had an option to, whether they worked those days or when they worked those days. And the new calendar made it mandatory that these were the working days.
I mean.
To schedule the working days.
Right.
The floating days were unscheduled, but now you have those five days as mandatory scheduled.
So we're, I mean, we're trying to clearly articulate on the calendar to match the 182 days.
And that's what the faculty is protesting. They want the flexibility rather than the mandatory.
Right.
So in the past, was there 100, like, let's say just last year, just flat out, was there 180 days?
In the past, they've always had flexibility up until this particular calendar. That's my understanding.
So in the past, we've, we've begun consistently on a Monday in the fall, and then in the spring, we've consistently also began on a Monday. We begin classes on Tuesday.
Did they get paid for those days in the past?
They've.
Whether they worked or not? Did they get paid for them?
So we've always identified faculty as 182 days. And so, yes, I think the short answer is, I mean, it's just, again, an attempt to identify what those working days are.
Okay. So just, just stay with me. In the past, they got paid, and the days were flexible, and they weren't necessarily on the calendar, but they got paid for those, for the day, for five flexible or whatever you call those days, correct? The five days in question, talking about.
Why don't we ask faculty?
Are they, are they on the room?
They're still here.
Well.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they were, yes, they were paid.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on, go ahead, go ahead.
It's a, it's a 180, it's a 182-day contract, so yes, they were paid for 182 days.
Right.
Okay. And now, they're getting paid for 182 days. The difference between the previous and now that's proposed is that the days, those five days in question are actually on the calendar as opposed to flexible, you can work them when you want to, or when the greatest needed. Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So it isn't adding five days?
No, it's not adding.
Same five, but they're on the calendar.
Right. Yeah, there's no increase in normal workload, and the contract speaks to 182 days, and so it's an attempt to articulate or show on the calendar what those 182 days are.
Okay. If there, final question, so sorry, I don't mean to take up too much time, I just want to make sure I'm super clear. So if there is a person who falls, you know, under the 182-day rule, the five days that are flexible, for lack of a better term, if they are not needed on one of those days that is designated in the calendar, on, on the proposed calendar, is the expectation that they would get paid, and then they would have to choose another day, or they get paid and just don't have to work that day?
I mean, I don't know how to answer that, that question in just, I mean, the faculty are 182 days and 212, and so they have a pay rate that's set by the, the master contract. And so we're, we're really not trying to, I mean, we're just really trying to articulate what the workdays are. And so.
What the workdays are and how many?
Yes. And so faculty do have a flexible work schedule, so the only weeks that they're actually required to be physically on campus for the majority of the day, and this is 182-day faculty, are during the Welcome Week periods. And so their schedules are variable, you know, depending upon what their course schedules are. So there are guidelines or requirements in the contract in terms of office hours. So faculty enjoy a significant amount of flexibility, and that's appropriate, and that's, you know, that's defined in the contract. But, I mean, this was kind of the, the idea was to identify what those 182 days are based on, based on the pay schedule, I suppose.
Well. Go ahead, go ahead.
Based on some of their comments, those flexible days were used to come in and serve on, if they weren't supposed to be here, and they were serving on a selection committee or whatever may be going on, on the college, how would that be addressed now? We didn't pay them extra for coming in when they weren't supposed to be here, but now if those days are already identified, so now are we going to pay them overload when they come in, or how is that going to be handled now when they have to come in, since those days are going to be defined if we vote that way?
So no one's ever been, to my knowledge, we've never required individual faculty members to work outside the identified 182-day contract, which is beginning with the first day of the fall semester and ending with graduation. Now, sometimes faculty do volunteer to come to, for example, search committees, but I have had search committees where no faculty were available because just no faculty came during the summer. So it's not, I don't think it's an expectation that they serve on those committees. Now, if they don't serve on the committees, and we do have to hire individuals in the summer, they may not have input, but that's just kind of, that's, that's how, you know, those situations work. We, so I don't know if that answered your question, I'm sorry. We, we don't require faculty members to come outside this contract. Now, some people may be paid in the summer to teach summer classes, and so they may opt to go, you know, they may opt to go on a professional development. But in terms of that, the college's viewpoint is if we're paying for you to go to a professional development, that's the benefit, not necessarily the, you know, paying for that time, if that makes sense. Now, if it were a requirement, so if the college decided to require a faculty member to go to a professional development, so I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement of your job, then we would pay because we don't have the authority to require them to do something outside of this contract. And so I know there have been past practices perhaps, or past occurrences, where faculty have been paid extra time to go on professional development, but as we thought about that philosophically, it's like, well, the college is paying for you to go to that, and if it's something that you want to go to, we're happy to pay for it, but in terms of requiring you to do that work outside the master contract, no.
So I have a few questions, and I don't know, this may be more for HR, or maybe even Mr. Goheen, but in the contract, is there any language that says that there shall be these five days that are set aside for anyone to use for whatever they please? Is there any mention of that?
No.
So, and it was brought up that this may be something that would need to be a negotiated item, but what I'm hearing is that we're not changing the number of days worked, we're just scheduling the 182 that it's always said should be there.
Right.
And been paid.
Paid, yeah.
So my, my struggle with this is that any member of the public that may be watching this is probably questioning that we've been paying for 182 days, but only getting 177 of work for a long time. So I'm, I think my opinion is that we're correcting an issue that, that needs correcting. It may not be, it's going to be a change for some, I would agree, but it doesn't sound unreasonable to me. Any other input?
No, I was, I was pretty much thinking the same thing. It's, if, if I'm hearing both sides, and it's, you know, trying to make sure we listen with both ears today, is contractually, it's 182 days. It sounds like what was previously locked in on the calendar was the 177 with these five. And I come from my old AT&amp;T world, so I remember where floating holidays were, you got these five, pick where you want. But in this case, i- it's not really quite the same. It's, we're paying for 182, or the college is paying for 182. We have locked in the 177. The other five were not mandated on the calendar versus you have five other days, and if we need you to serve these five other days, we've got the flexibility to lock you in for the five. If I'm understanding it right, it sounds like what has happened is the other five are on the calendar, where they weren't before. So the other side of that coin is, I'm getting, I'm just going to wear another hat, I'm going to get paid for 182. I may actually only work 177 if I don't pick up those other five days to come in and do something additional. Versus now, they're locked in on the calendar, and everything else I do outside of that would be on a volunteer basis. Am I, am I thinking it right, Mr. Pope?
I mean, I think so.
Okay.
I, I think I'm clear on this, but I just want to make sure. So we're, we're not asking that they be on campus for those additional, or not additional, but for those five days. We're just saying that they have to answer the phone if we call.
Yes, be available. That's what's noted on the calendar, that the faculty are available.
Well, clearly, with them voting against it, and they said KNE, you say KNEA, to me, that speaks loud and clear that we, and I, we probably need to take into consideration what they are saying and let it be a negotiated item instead of us deciding, because that's, that speaks to me is what they're saying and what KNEA is saying. So to me, it's not just, oh, okay, yeah, let's just do this because we're locking them in. So that's, that's my opinion. So you already know how I'm going to vote.
Well, I think it could be brought the next time negotiations are opened up, which is when we just.
So to be in, yeah, it'll be in January. We've, I mean, what the, we've never negotiated the calendar, and I, no.
Just to be clear, the, the number of days worked under the contract, that is negotiable. The calendar, the school calendar, calendar is not negotiable. That's just set by the Board of Trustees.
Right.
So that's, that, that's not a negotiable item. Just want to be clear, under the statute, just want to be clear about that.
So if there was anything to negotiate, it would really be from the NEA side would be asking to reduce the number of workdays to 177?
Yeah. The number of days worked, that's a negotiable item. Other terms and conditions of employment are, but the actual calendar for the college is set by the Board of Trustees, and that actual calendar is not something that's negotiated.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, it sounds like if there was something that they were going to go back and negotiate, that would be in their hands to renegotiate workdays versus if we, if the contract has already been approved for 182?
And they're identifying the 182 for our approval.
Yeah. And to have that be a part of negotiation sounds reasonable. It just needs to be one of the items that that side brings to the table, it sounds like, and then it would be addressed. But I think for right now, at least from my perspective, that, I think we're just doing what, to the letter of the current contract, so. Any other thoughts, or do we have a motion?
Well, it's messy, but I'll make a motion. We adopt the calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries, 5-2. Thank you. Next, I would invite the presentation of the revision of program for the Automation and Engineering Technology Certificate A presented by Mr. Pope.
So we have a certificate C, I almost went blank on that, and an AAS. And so this creation of the certificate A is to meet the needs of Panasonic, so the students will be coming, and some students that are in the fame cohort, cohort will be doing the AAS degree, but we have, based on feedback from Panasonic and from the Advisory Board, we've created this certificate, a 16-credit hour certificate, so that students can take that, take, you know, receive a certificate and receive a credential upon completing these courses. And so we're just kind of moving it through the process. And I ask for your approval for this, and then the next thing it'll do is to go to the Technical Education Authority for their vote. I think, oh, sorry.
How soon would this classes, once, I know there's an approval process, but do you have like a target date of when you think you want to implement this program?
Sure, that's a good question, and I didn't provide all that information. These are not new courses, so we already have these courses. They have been taught. It's just kind of a new repackaging of these courses. And we will have Panasonic employees starting our program in January. And so in the interim, what they can do, and we've done this many other times, is they declare the AAS as their degree, and then by the time the official approval comes, they can move to this, you know, to this degree. But we haven't created any new classes. We've just kind of packaged the classes so that the technical requirements are at the beginning of the certificate, and that can serve the needs of the students who can then become employed. And that, once they take this training, well, actually during this training, because it's an apprenticeship program too, but during this training, they will be employed by Panasonic, and then they will be able to go, once they complete this training, and get a bump in salary based on these, based on earning this credential. And then for students who want to continue the training, there is the option of the AAS, and there will be some students that are in that program.
When, when you say that they are already working at Panasonic, so where are these classes being taught? Will they be taught at Panasonic location or here on camp, at the tech center?
Sorry. They're at the tech center that we taught, yeah, here. And in fact, we, we have put in for a GIST grant to purchase a few more pieces of equipment to try to work with Panasonic because their lab or their space is not quite completed. And so we have a, we have a nice space, and we, we will have room for those students. It'll be crowded for a little bit, but we expect that some of their work will happen at Panasonic once Panasonic is up and running. But the classes will by and large be taught here.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. And that space is a gorgeous space, I will say. Chuck Saunders and Don Smith, the dean, have done a really good job getting that space looking great.
Any other questions for Mr. Pope? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the, sorry, the program revision?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. I will just take a moment to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas to all of our faculty, staff, students, administration. I hope that everyone takes some time to recharge your batteries, spend time with family, and come back fresh and new year. So with that, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.
Good night.